Thank you. Welcome, everyone. As interim superintendent and acting chair of the North Hampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the North Hampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, and webinar ID 95030545769, or by clicking on the following website address that is listed on the agenda. We're providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at r evans@SAU21.org. We are adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Okay, we can take a roll call vote.
Okay. Martin Tavishian?
Present and alone.
Jermina Peterson?
Present with family in and out.
Tom Von Jess?
Present alone.
Brian Belanger?
Present alone.
And Danielle Strater. Danielle, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, present and alone.
Okay. You're welcome. I have the roll call taken.
Thank you. So I want to officially welcome our new board members, Brian Belanger and Danielle Strater. Welcome to your official first official North Hampton School Board meeting. And now I'll take any motions or nominations for board chair.
I will make a motion to make Tom Von Jess our new chair for North Hampton School.
Second thought.
Okay, any discussion? Or protests? All set? Okay, we can take a roll call vote.
Okay, Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
And Danielle Strater?
Yes.
Okay. And the roll call taken and congratulations, Tom.
Thank you, Jermina. Thank you for your nomination. All board members, thank you. I will do my best with your help to represent our students, parents, community, and faculty and staff in this next coming year. So thank you.
No doubt.
We'll do it together. So next item on the agenda is appointment of a vice chair. Do I have a nomination for a vice chair?
I'd make a motion to nominate Jermina Peterson for the vice chair of the school board.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Danielle. Any discussion? Any additional nominations or protests? Move to vote.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
And Danielle Strater?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded and congratulations, Jermina.
Thank you. Thank you, Martin, for the nomination and all of you voting.
We've got a good team, and part of the importance of this team is to make sure that we share responsibilities, which is the next part of the agenda, which is school board committee appointments. What I'd like to recommend is we'll go through these one by one. From a process standpoint, I think what might be helpful is we'll write a brief description on what the role entails and the time commitment. Perhaps those who are in the role currently can share a little, a few thoughts on it as well. And then anyone that's interested in volunteering, please do so. And we will, and it's okay if there's multiple people, we can just talk it through and make sure that everyone has a role. Is that fair enough? So the first appointed position is SAU Operations Committee. The Operations Committee is a group of every one of our school boards on the joint board. They get together about once a quarter and actually put together the agenda with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for the joint board meeting. So they put together the agenda and they're leaned on to make sure that we're represented in preparation. I believe, Martin, you were on that board last year. Is that right? Can you share a little bit about your experience and kind of what it entails?
I think, like you said, we met a few times, a little more than quarterly. Just to discuss the workings of the SAU, it wasn't a tremendous amount of time commitment, but there were several additional meetings involved.
So this position also has an alternative, an alternate, rather. Do we have anyone who'd like to volunteer as SAU Operations Committee member for North Hampton?
I will.
Danielle? Okay, Danielle Strater, SAU OC, primary. Do we have an alternate? It's just if Danielle can't make it.
I can do that if nobody else wants to.
Thank you, Martin. The next one, listen, I want to make sure that you don't all start yelling at once. It's the SAU Policy Committee Team. The SAU Policy Committee works with the SAU Superintendent and Rhonda, and does a lot of work here to review the policies that we have, typically meets every five or six weeks. Is that right, Rhonda?
I think we try to meet quarterly as well.
Right, quarterly, even better. Quarterly, review policies, retire policies, bring those policies back. Takes a little bit of prep work to read them, but the SAU does a great job of kind of walking everybody through them, what's required, and then bring them back and explain or answer any questions if there are any questions to the board for the first read. I actually have been on it the last couple of years. It's been really insightful to see kind of what the regulations and changes that we're making and to make sure that we're in compliance with kind of state laws. Any volunteers for the Policy Committee meeting?
I'll take the Policy Committee meeting.
Jermina? You've got it. Any, we need an alternate as well in case Jermina can't make the meeting.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Brian. The next couple, we're in off cycle, so SCA negotiations, we don't need anybody this year, as well as SESPA negotiations, because we're not negotiating contracts this year, so we'll pass on those. Facilities Committee. Facilities Committee currently is with Martin. Martin, do you want to describe a little bit about that position?
We actually have not had any meetings on that in the last year.
Because we were all alone. The Facilities Committee meeting, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Matt, you know, again, meets monthly, maybe every other month, will walk through with the facility staff current needs for the building, plans for any improvements. And when we come to the board, they'll represent the Facilities Committee in terms of making a recommendation for some of the updates or upgrades that we need for maintenance or improvements. It's just making sure the board has a voice and understanding the details of what's needed for our school building.
That's right. You know, it's probably closer to quarterly. Yeah, this past year, we, yeah, to Martin's point, we really have not met. However, we do meet in specific, to address any type of facilities related issues, but specifically, we'll take a look at our long-term maintenance plan. So it's sort of like a CIP Capital Improvement Plan. We issue a long-term maintenance warrant article on an annual basis that addresses those maintenance or capital, you know, concerns for the building. And we present that to to the actual CIP representative as well. So it's kind of in conjunction with that person. But the facilities rep is heavily involved with that planning as well, because it's all facilities related. So it's pretty, it's not a huge time commitment, just facilities stuff.
I'd be happy to do that again.
Excellent, Martin. Thank you. We do need for facilities, oh, we don't, oh, yeah, we need an alternate as well. Do we have volunteer for alternate?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Danielle. All right, Budget Committee. Budget Committee, I was on the Budget Committee last year, very interesting process. Here are the facts. The facts are that Matt is amazing and is very well-prepared and comes in and does a great job of expressing the needs of the school to the Budget Committee. However, we do need a representative there to kind of reinforce what Matt has, what Matt shares, and to explain the work that this, that the school committee does in preparation for presenting the budget. I would, like I said, I was on it last year. If anyone would like to be on it this year, you're welcome to be on it. It's really kind of a neat process, and it was an eye-opener for me. And if we don't have any, listen, I'm happy to do it again, but I want to make sure that I'm not doing it just to do it. If anyone would like to do it, I'd be happy to have you do it.
And Tom, maybe you can speak to the work you did on the town side as well, because it's not just school.
Correct. It's not just the school. So during kind of planning season, there are probably, what would you say, there's weekly or every two weeks? Meetings, there's, you do have to review the town budget and represent the, as a school board representative on the Budget Committee, you're actually, you have a voice and you're voting on everything from Boars Head to Police and Fire, to the library, to the town budget, every one of those kind of votes and everything that moves forward has our voice involved in that. So there is a fair amount of work and prep work involved, but it's certainly not something that's insurmountable. Jonathan Panetta does a great job in kind of preparing everybody for that. All right, with all of that silence, I will volunteer.
And I would volunteer to continue to be your alternate.
And I tried to sell, Matt does all the work. It's actually, it's very, it's very cool, and if anyone who might be interested in doing it next year, I encourage you to participate in a couple of the meetings. There you go, Jermina, there you go.
This is what he's talking about.
Jermina was the alternate, and I couldn't make one of the meetings this year, so thank you for covering.
I will continue to be your alternate this year.
Thank you. All good. I appreciate that. And then New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate. So this job is a very cool job. There are two things involved with this job. First of all, the New Hampshire School Board Association gets together once a year, and they put together kind of positions to share with, well, their positions for the New Hampshire School Board in terms of policies that the legislature should consider and their lobbying efforts. It's one day, it's on a Saturday. There's some pre-work up to that point, because we'll actually get an opportunity to actually submit proposals. And you'll also have the responsibility of kind of polling this school board to make sure you understand the school board's position, so that when you go and represent us, you're representing the school board and not just your position. It's one, it's one Saturday a year in Concord. You get to meet school board representatives from across the state, and it's a neat opportunity to kind of network and see how other school boards operate as well. Any volunteer?
I will volunteer for that.
So we have two volunteers. Jermina, thank you. Brian, you volunteered as well?
No, no, she can go. It's, that's okay. It's fine. Jermina would like to do that.
Okay, Jermina, you're on it. Thank you. Now, just in case something happens, we don't have an alternate, but we'll keep that in mind, Brian, in case it becomes a conflict on that, on that date. All right, School Council. School Council is an important role. The School Council and kind of listening, making sure that the teachers' voices, the teachers and staff voices are heard, and that there's kind of this shared decision-making. They get together once a month, and they talk about what's going on at the school. They talk about how things are going. You talk about kind of what the staff wants to be working on and the direction that we're heading in. This is a great position. They've invited a school board member to participate. It's important that we hear firsthand kind of what's happening, and the, these meetings happen typically, what day of the week, Susan, and what time of the day?
So they're typically Wednesdays and typically three o'clock. We have talked about maybe having them every other month next year, so we haven't fully decided whether it'll be every month or every other month, but they are typically Wednesdays at three, because they're in our rotation of like faculty meetings. So that's the time we've set aside. I know that may not be ideal for board members, but.
Gotcha. So I see Brian raising his hand. Brian? You are it. Thank you for your, for volunteering. Channel 22. So Channel 22, we need a representative, we're a liaison for Channel 22. This is not a heavy lift job, but just making sure that we both have a voice to reach out to John, and John has a voice, a person to reach out to. If there's any communication that needs to happen. Do we have a volunteer for the Channel 22 liaison? Brian just raised his hand.
I've done it in, I've done it in other districts, if there's, so.
Wonderful. Thank you, Brian. And then Legislative Liaison. So this legislative liaison certainly can be anybody. It was recommended in the past that the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate also be the legislative liaison, because the two positions are kind of tied. So I'm not saying that it needs to be that way, but I'm sharing what's been recommended in the past. If anyone would like to volunteer. Jermina? Jermina, may I volunteer you?
We volunteer Tom.
So this job requires no work. So I there's nothing that's involved. So, okay, I will certainly do it. And I'll let you know what happens so that you can represent the NHA, the New Hampshire School Board Association.
Perfect.
SIP, hey, Matt, I've even over five years, I've not really been involved in the Capital Improvement Plan Committee. Can I lean on you to describe what goes on here?
Certainly. So I actually recommend that it's good to have the facilities rep be the CIP rep as well. So that's the Capital Improvement Plan. It's a five-year plan where we outline any sort of capital capital improvements that we have planned for the school district. So in the past, we've had such projects as the conversion from an oil burning furnace to a natural gas. We have items such as, you know, roof projects, paving, playground, you know, resurfacing, any of those kind of larger capital projects. This representative would be. You said SIP, you're saying CIP, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
The C silent.
I had a momentary panic attack that you're talking about, the school improvement plan. So it's all facilities related, and and it really would make a lot of sense if the facilities, that the, that rep was the same in this case. Sorry, Martin.
No, it's all good. Thank you for clarifying that.
I don't think I'm able to do that due to a conflict of interest with my employment. It creates a conflict for me as a voting member on that committee.
Martin, thank you for bringing that up. That's a, that's a great point. So we would like to do that. We're not going to do that this year. Any other volunteers for the CIP?
I'll do it, unless someone else wants to.
Thank you, Danielle. And Safety Committee. So Martin, you were on the Safety Committee last year as our resident firefighter. Tell us more about the position and whether or not you'd like to volunteer again.
That's another one where we didn't have any meetings, the pandemic, but I would absolutely volunteer again to do that.
All right, so without objection, Martin can continue on and maybe get some meetings this year. All right. So that is it. Thank you all for your commitment and your volunteering for these positions. Enjoy. So the next order is questions or comments from those in attendance, and I see that we do, I'm sorry.
You need to tell me, I think you need a one vote on all of those.
I apologize. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the following committee's appointees as we discussed.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda, and thank you, Jermina. That's the teamwork that I was talking about, we would need, because I skipped right past that. So thank you. So now we'll move on to questions and comments from those in attendance. I do see that we have nine attendees. If any attendee would like to make a comment, please use the raise the hand function, and we will bring you in to speak.
I am not currently seeing anybody raising their hands.
Okay. If someone later on would like to, please raise your hand, and without objection, we'll bring you in. I know sometimes that there can be a delay in technology, but we certainly want to hear your comments if you have them. Item four is approval of minutes. We have the March 4 regular meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 4, 2021 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 4, 2020 meeting, 2021, sorry.
Second thought.
Any discussion or comments? Sorry, thanks.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
I'm staying.
And Danielle Strater?
Staying.
All right, I have that vote recorded.
To pros. Item five, Correspondence and Commendations. Do we have any correspondence or commendations?
Do.
Susan?
I have a couple. I have two cards here from Cindy Burke, and I just would like to read those. The first one is for the teacher, staff, and administrators at North Hampton School, and Cindy wrote, "Thank you for the kind words and gift during my second, very brief term on the North Hampton School Board. It became clear that North Hampton School has excellent leadership. We're so lucky to have each of you." And she just went on to just say that she thought that our dedication and care for students and staff during, in the school during the pandemic has been exemplary, that we balance health and student achievement creatively and positively. So she just expressed her gratitude here. And then the second one is to members of the school board, and it happened to be mailed to North Hampton School. So I asked Tom for permission to read it for you, and it says, "Dear North Hampton School Board, thank you for the kind words and gifts. It was clear during my brief tenure that the board is in excellent hands. It was especially, especially wonderful to see the progress since my last term. It was a pleasure working with each of you. I wish you all good luck as we come out of the pandemic with gratitude, Cindy Burke." So just two really nice notes that we wanted to share with you. And then I have a couple of commendations for tonight, too. The first one is for Becca and for Jeremy Murphy, who happens to be an attendee on their hard work to get our report cards all up and available for parents in Power School. It's been part of a big initiative across the SAU so that parents can access their child's report card electronically through the parent portal in Power School. And Becca and Jeremy have done an excellent job of coordinating the, all the behind-the-scenes details that honestly, you have no idea. And it's much more complex than it looks, and they did a fantastic job. Also, just so many thanks to Caroline and her team for putting together the Vaccination Clinic for our closed pod. I think she'll talk a little bit more about it, but the, the staff at North Hampton School are so grateful, and I think one of the things that was especially, a detail that's especially appreciated was that all staff who work at the school were eligible to get the vaccination, and that includes contracted service providers, you know, kitchen staff, everybody in the school. So it really has, I think, it's just such a step in the right direction, and it makes people feel really good to be on that road. And then the last commendation, I just wanted to share thanks to teachers who have been serving on interview committees this year. So we had a hiring committee for the BCBA, and we wanted to thank April Levesque, Mara DeRozier, and Tracy Barnes, all served on that interview committee. Then you have two nominees tonight for Special Education, and Karen Haas in fourth grade, and Jen Herman served on that committee, along with the three of us. And then we interviewed for the Physical Education Teacher this week, too, and Patrick Guedee, Catherine LaCroix, Karen Donahoe, and Elliot Pope all served on that committee. So it's just been really nice to see different folks from different walks of life within our school, all volunteering to be on interview committees to keep to keep our hiring practices fresh and to have a voice in keeping North Hampton the great place it is. So, thank you.
There's a lot of great work there, and it's great to see, you know, that's community administration and staff all kind of coming together to make the school what it is. So that's that's neat. Are there any other comments or commendations from the rest of the participants?
I would, I would love to thank, speaking of teachers going above and beyond and volunteering their time. Brenda Tharp and Tricia Markey, our two fifth-grade classroom teachers, have graciously taken on a student from Winnicott, also a graduate of North Hampton School in her ELO this year. So she is exploring various careers in child development, thinking about what she might want to major in in college. And so after the students are spending their afternoon hours outside, she is coming to campus and learning more about that particular grade level and and helping to inform her decisions moving forward. So we're super happy to be able to help out with that, and I appreciate the teachers taking that time.
That's cool. Thanks, Becca.
Yep, and I also have accommodation for the Special Education Department. This transition to five days a week has been interesting. They've all, from pre-K through eighth grade, have buckled down and worked with each other, worked with our UA staff, worked with the whole school to make sure our students that are identified with the needs, special education needs, receive their services as identified in their IEPs to the best of our abilities, and also keeping in communication with the families if days had to change, or if they are, the services are before school or after school, and also taking on extra meetings and extra evaluations as well. So I wanted to let them know that.
The work of you and your team is critical on a normal, under normal circumstances, and with what we've gone through over the last year, it's even more important now than ever. So thank you for doubling down on your efforts for our students.
No problem.
Any others? All right. So we will move on to Kayla. Hi, and our student representative report. Kayla, thank you for being so patient. There was a lot of stuff we had to get through, but I appreciate your patience, and I'm excited to hear about what's going on at Northampton with full students there, all the students.
Yeah, no problem for waiting. I actually really enjoyed listening to you guys. I hope someday to be in a position like you guys are. So it's nice to hear you all working things out. So that's really cool to see. So I'm starting this presentation smiling because this has been a fantastic month. The middle schoolers who chose to be back in the building every day have been, which has been so nice. And it's especially great seeing everyone with my own eyes, not just through a computer screen. And there have been lots of nice things that are happening in school that I want to share with you. First of all, middle schoolers have had a block of time every single day called the Flex Block where they do different activities. Some examples of these activities are silent reading, extra Spanish learning opportunities, and time outside. Speaking of outside, middle schoolers have done a great job playing outside with friends and classmates safely. Even though we have to social distance, there are lots of fun games that are still being played. For example, this Wednesday, my friends and I brought lacrosse sticks to school. We made a big circle outside on the soccer field and passed a ball around for 15 minutes or so. This fun outside break made going back into the building and back to classes way easier. Also, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classes have gotten to do in-person group work. Now, this may not sound like a big deal, but trying to socialize in breakout rooms is not the easiest thing to do. That is why arranging our chairs and desks so that we can sit behind our shields and circles to work together has been so nice. I want to wrap up my presentation with a couple of things that I'm grateful for. I am so grateful for the cafeteria workers who have delivered optional lunches and breakfast to our classrooms every single day. They are always smiling, and their effort to give us all healthy and delicious meals is not going unnoticed. Next, I want to thank all of our teachers. They are working tirelessly to keep us safe and distance while teaching us. Our schedules are complicated, and somehow they are always where they need to be with a smile under their masks. Lastly, I want to thank the school board and state for allowing middle school students to have the option to go back to in-person school. It has been a wonderful first two weeks back, and I am so happy to finish off my nine years at NHS in the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. It's always great to hear your voice and understand what's happening from the student's perspective because that's why that's why the teachers and the school board members and all the staff are here. So we're here for you, and I appreciate you. And get ready, man. Get your get your signs ready because you can run pretty soon.
Thank you so much.
So you're gonna wait for Matt's presentation, or are you gonna sign off?
Unfortunately, I have to sign off, but have a nice night, everyone.
All right. Thanks. Have a good night, Kayla. We're lucky to have that. I can't remember whose idea it was to to have a student representative, but great idea whoever's it was. And Kayla does a great job representing the the students. Next is our outdoor classroom update. Liam Velucci, an Eagle Scout from our community, has done some great work for us. And would you leave him a chance to update us on the work that he's been doing?
Everyone, it's nice to see you. And just in advance, I'd like to say thank you again for easing along the process for me to do my Eagle project and kind of get back to the school was was an honor to kind of be able to kind of do something for a school that did so much for me. So I just have a brief presentation. I won't take up too much of your time, just kind of giving some important dates and a bit of a transformation of the area that we did it in. So just. Oh, never mind. So I can't share my screen for whatever reason, so I'll just kind of go through it and.
Hey, Liam, if you give us one second, we'll give you.
I can give you that permission.
And we locked you up.
There we go. Can you all see that? Okay?
Yeah, it's perfectly.
Perfect. Thank you. So I will. All right. So as you mentioned, my I had done the outdoor classroom project. It's important dates. This dates all the way back to the end of August last year. That's when I first heard about the need for an outdoor classroom project. This is brought to I learned about it from my Eagle coach, Mr. Tharp, who some of you may or may not be familiar with. He brought that to me. I stuck to the process. It was approved November 11, and we finished up this past month on March 14. So here are some just before pictures. This is the area back when I actually went out with Mr. Guedy and and I believe Mrs. Tharp was there, too. So these are some images of the area before we began construction. And I believe now we have some photos of the scouts I worked with during the construction of the project. As you can see, that's the hole for the support, and that's the bench being constructed. And these are the benches now. This is before we put the mulch in, but the benches are fully constructed at this point. I'm honestly very happy with the way they turned out. I hope you all be able to use them in the future, and thanks again.
Thank you both for your presentation, more importantly, for the work that you did, the service for the community. This can be a great place for the the teachers and students to get out, and I know it's more important now than ever. And it's also a place that the community can use. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add a thank you, too, because it came out great. So I've walked down there twice since you finished. So I walked down there one time before you put the mulch around the footings, and then again, just the other day when it was so windy. And they, you know, the it just looks great. It was a great location. And one of the things that we noticed was that the benches, I think the benches in the first outdoor classroom have either settled or what for whatever reason, they're 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 kind of low to the ground, and this new setup is just the right height, I think, for kids to sit and just looks really sturdy, and it's going to last us. So and it's a great location. So thank you so much, Liam.
Thanks. Much appreciated.
Any other comments? All right. Well, Liam, thank you, and thank you for hanging in there for us to get to this part of the agenda. Important work that you do, and congratulations on becoming an Eagle Scout. What's the percentage? How many scouts become Eagle Scouts?
Um, the actual number, it's kind of, it's not striking me, but.
It's all right. Not many.
Yeah, not many.
You're elite. You're in the you're in the like the top 3%. So good on you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Technology Plan Update. Susan, who will be presenting this?
So it will be Becca and me and also Dimitri Mattis, so he should come to the panel if Rhonda can do that, too.
Want me to share my screen? Shall I ask Rhonda for permissions? Are we gonna have a visual for that?
I believe you. I believe you already have that, Becca. I think I gave that to you already.
You did. Thank you.
So as as Becca's queuing that up, we began this work well over a year ago in anticipation of of doing some long-term planning for our technology needs. So we had the the draft ready in the fall, and and we used the we used this draft and the the beliefs, guiding beliefs behind it to to build our technology budget for next year, too. So that budget's already been approved. So when we get to the end, you'll see that the budget numbers in year one of this technology plan match exactly for the FY22 budget that was passed. So we we had a great committee, and you can see the committee members right here. So we had nice representation. We met pretty regularly and came up with our major goals. And you can see them on the next page. We had four major goals that were built around the the values that we identified in our profile of graduate work last year. So you can see, actually scroll down just a teeny bit, Becca, to the top again, you can top of the page there, where it says Communication, Critical Thinking, Responsibility, Perseverance, Integrity, Learner's Mindset, Empathy, and Problem Solving. Those were the values that we identified as qualities that we'd like to see in our students when they graduate from Northampton School. And so we 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 looked at our technology plan through the lens of what do we want our students to know and be able to do? And how does technology enhance their learning through their time at Northampton School? So we identified four major goals, and you can see them here. Enhance student learning through the use of instructional technology. Provide high-quality professional development for teachers to be able to efficiently use or effectively, sorry, use instructional technology. Plan for the purchasing of devices and equipment that matches students' developmental levels and that has a defined lifecycle plan. And maintain a robust network infrastructure that provides high-performance wireless connectivity. So those were our four main goals, and you'll see that the plan is set up around those goals. These are these are objectives from the staff and student perspective. I won't read them to you because I think you've had a chance to see this document in board docs ahead of time. But you can see some of the things that students will do, some of the ways how technology will enhance teachers' instructional delivery and the way it enhances students' experiences as they learn. I used to work with someone who said, you know, a laptop or an iPad is the new pencil. You know, it's a tool for for learning. It's not a separate subject anymore like it was 15 or 20 years ago. So again, we will read through every part of this, but essentially, we've tried to match devices to students and and to learning opportunities that students will have. And and again, the methodology that teachers use for for instruction and devices that will match student needs. So you can see that we've been able to get ahead, actually, because one of the things the pandemic did was it got us a little bit ahead of schedule in terms of having a device ratio of one-to-one students to devices. And so you'll see in this plan that that we have to, we have a few things to catch up on. But essentially, we we view our students in three grade spans at Northampton School, K2, 3, 5, and 6, 8. And they are at different developmental stages. So we are matching students in K2 and 3, 5 with iPads with special cases and keyboards. And then six to eight will continue to have the MacBook Air laptop computers. So I'm going to pass it off to Becca. Becca's going to talk about the details of the first two goals, and then I'll jump back in for the third goal. And Dimitri will talk to you about the fourth goal and be able to answer questions.
And so the first goal actually has two objectives associated with it. So when we're thinking about enhancing student learning through the use of instructional technology, obviously, the first piece is about what students are are learning. So that's really what the first objective is about. So it speaks to the incorporation of the 21st century skills. The ISTI standards, of course, are the standards that guide our curriculum. So again, just as Susan said, we're not going to read the document to you. I'm sure you've had a chance to review it. But we we spent a good deal of time thinking about the core beliefs about educational technology and its place in Northampton School. We spent a lot of time documenting the digital tools that are used in our classroom that we train our students to use, and a lot of consideration about how informational, communication, communication technology is integrated into the classroom as well as taught, depending on the grade level in a separate in a separate class. So when we think about what the the instruction looks like around technology in grades K to 4, this section speaks to both the standalone Unified Arts class that students attend as well as the incorporation of the use of technology and learning about technology within the classroom. In grade five, our students no longer have a Unified Arts, but that increased presence of technology in both project based learning and assessments, and as well as using Destiny within the library. So grade five is a bit of a transition year. And then, of course, in grades six through eight, the certainly the very strong presence that the use of technology and continuing to to learn to use it more effectively and responsibly comes into play. Scroll through. Then our second piece, second objective associated with the first goal is providing equitable access to technology. This was one of the the big projects that our last technology committee spent a lot of time discussing. What would be the most appropriate learning environment for students in technology? And a lot of discussion was had about the importance of having equitable access, no matter whose classroom you were in. So we wanted students to have similar experiences. We also wanted professional development. We'll get into that in a moment with the the next goal. We wanted students, teachers, to be able to experience professional development at the same time and to learn alongside each other, as well as to be able to collaborate with similar tools in the classroom. So the devices that we would like to equip each classroom with for the best learning environment for our students would be, of course, the the devices in the classroom, the iPads and the MacBooks that Susan has already shared. For the presentation systems, a smart board for each classroom. We certainly do have some in our classrooms right now. And the the benefits of having an interactive smart board are are multiple across all all aspects of the student's learning. The the teachers being able to plan lessons ahead of time and and share them using the the tools that are available with this with the interactive software is really wonderful. To be able to engage students, to have students come to the board, to be able to record the entire lesson from start to finish, both for for students to be able to use to review, to share with students if they're absent, for teachers to share for the next day so they can pick up where they left off. The students' devices, the iPads, and the laptops can connect wirelessly so students can share their work and share out with the class. So the smart boards are a really powerful educational tool, and we're very excited to have more of them coming into our building in the future. Document cameras. Likewise, they're very helpful for teachers to share hard copies of books and other paper resources as well as students to be able to share with the class a math problem that they've been working on, a strategy they've been using, or something associated with the science experiment data that they've gathered without having to recreate it on the whiteboard. So the document cameras, we found to be very, very useful. The Red Cats are an audio system for classrooms that, when we first brought them into the the building, they were for students who had had them as part of their IEP or 504. And we found this, this is a super powerful, universal accommodation. So having the sound projected throughout the classroom has been a benefit for all of our students, and especially with our our use of our outdoor classroom spaces. It's been really nice. These are portable. So to be able to take them outside has been very helpful as well. So we've we are very excited to to be working towards having these universal setups for instruction in our classrooms. The second goal is around professional development. Really, our our use of technology by our teachers in in this pandemic is is one of the silver linings that I can point to. If you had asked us what we would be capable of, we never could have guessed what, in fact, we are capable of. There are no teachers in our building or EAs in our building or staff in our building that are intimidated by technology any longer. We are lifelong learners, and we are very excited to continue that process together. So we have some job embedded professional development plans. We have workshops, and I won't go into all the details that that are here, but using resources within the building, using resources without outside the building, and certainly the trainings that will come with the the tools that we would like to outfit our classrooms in. So you see more of those details there. So workshops, courses, job embedded. All right. And the third goal is funding, so I will pass that back to Ms. Snyder.
So you'll see in the plan that there are some tables that describe the the expenditures that we're planning for each of the three years. Essentially, we're we're looking to fund the 100 iPads, which will complete the the purchase for elementary grades. Initially, when we started this plan, we were going to lease 150 iPads. And because we were able to kind of get ahead this year and use some grant funds, and we purchased about 50 brand-new iPads with cases and keyboards this year. So it enables us, it enabled us to lease 50 fewer iPads because we already owned these. So they're they're leased to own. It's a lease-to-own situation, so we would lease them and also carry Apple Care on them, which is really helpful for, you know, if there's any damage to any of the devices. you know, if there's any damage to any of the devices, keyboards. And we'll begin, the idea is that we'll go through these, we'll do, we'll have a three-year lease for the elementary grade iPads. And we've just completed a round of purchasing MacBook Air laptops for middle school. So our middle school laptops are in really good shape and they're all pretty new. And we anticipate that they'll last us through this three-year cycle. And then the next tech plan, which will start in 2024, the focus will be on purchasing laptops for the middle school again. So that's kind of that, that's how the replacement cycle will be, will be built in. If we lease to own, we'll have the, we'll have the, we have the laptops now to carry us through the next three years and we'll be, we'll, we'll be paying for the iPads for all of elementary K five. And then the next, like I said, the next plan will loop back to the middle school laptop purchases. And it also incorporates the five to seven smart boards a year. Actually, I think we ended up with five and the Red Cat system. So you can see, you can see the numbers are pretty even. One of the goals of our planning for budgetary purposes was to have a relatively stable amount of, in the technology line, so that it, it just helps with budget planning. So that we're not, you know, we're not spending $200,000 one year and then nothing for three more years. So it's spread out with the, a lease enables you to spread out the purchases out and plug things in when you need to. And you'll see in a couple of places, it'll say like purchase of X smart boards. That's like the number of smart boards. And if you look on the right-hand side, it tells you how many. So that's, you know, as I said, we can answer questions at the end, but I'm going to pass it over to Dimitri, who understands the infrastructure as opposed to me, who, who barely does.
Hello, everyone. All right. So I'm going to speak to Go4. I'm going to go by each bullet point because there's some more information I could add. So currently we have 37 Arrow Hive devices and they are going end of life this year and next year. So we're going to start the process of upgrading our wireless network to Aruba. We found that it's a lot cheaper than sticking with Arrow Hive. We have, we had Comcast internet broadband that we shared with the community. 150 meg download, over 20 meg upload. But about two months ago, we upgraded to consolidated communications with a dedicated fiber circuit. So we don't share our data with the community. We found that with the middle school return, that we need to upgrade to 200 mics. So we're in the process of doing that right now. And I'm told that it should be complete within a week or two. We have three-layered, three-switch stacks, which basically are switches that act as routers. They're switch stacks, meaning that the, we call it master and slave. The master switch, I can program and it replicates the information to the slave switches connected to them. Our storage, I set up automatic backup on every device, student and staff, so that any document that they add to their desktop or on their computer anywhere actually will be automatically uploaded to their Google Drive, where they can access anywhere in the world. Security, we have firewall in the building that it filters traffic through our network and it provides web filtering. We also have a in-building Lightspeed Rocket web filter. That web filter works on, on all devices connected to the network in the building. Student devices were on them, but we purchased securely remote web footer for home, remote learning. So if they're home, they're still being filtered. Server and infrastructure, we have a Windows server, which was just purchased last year for our DCP, which basically provides IP addresses to our devices connected to the network. And the DNS is, it allows us to use google.com instead of the IP address for Google because that makes things complicated. And then we have a Mac Mini for open directory. Open directory works with our Lightspeed Rocket web filter. So we have, our web filtering is set up based on roles. We have admin role and staff role, which would be a teacher. And the Lightspeed Rocket looks at the open directory and determines how to filter the user. We have one print server, which allows me to add printers to that server and replicate it out to all devices on the network. And we have a via phone server and the facility server that houses all of the facilities, network equipment.
So and then you can see there's attachments with our acceptable use policy and a couple of the other documents at the very end, the take-home agreement. So that's the plan. And we are happy to answer any questions if you have any questions or comments about the plan.
So I've got, I've got a quick question and Dimitri, thank you for your explanation. I'm, I'm not familiar with Arrow Hive and Aruba. Are those just, are those brand names that you were talking about in the, the first part of that presentation?
Yeah, Arrow Hive and Aruba. Was HP, Arrow Hive, don't remember. I think it's Extreme, they were just bought out by a company.
Okay. So we're just going from one company to another company, same, same stuff. We're just replacing them because they're out of their lifecycle.
Yes, and it's a lot cheaper.
Yeah, good. Thank you for that. Any other questions, Brian?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks. This is a great plan that aligns increasing access to technology hardware, internet. And so I can really appreciate that. And one of the things I'm wondering is looking at the curriculum and, and the ISTI standards, thinking about how we can challenge, you know, folks to go back and look at how we're supporting our teachers to make sure that the technology is not just seen as just a, you know, a tool, but how, how are we creating creative communicators and innovative designers? And some of those really great ISTI standards that have come out in the, you know, and looking at the curriculum that was outlined, it doesn't show how we're necessarily how we're going to support the classroom teachers, because I think those are the most authentic places where technology is being integrated. And so, you know, I just, I, I really like the plan. But is there a plan to support teachers with those, those really higher level, deeper activities?
So we did, so we have a, a technology integration specialist and then our librarian who also works a lot with integrating digital resources and, and, and kind of understanding digital media and your sources and verifying, you know, what's a good source, what isn't a good source. So, so both of them have completed the Google, what's the Google? Is it, is there a special name for the Google certification? They did.
The educator one that they, that they have, and I think they're working on, on second ones as well.
So, so they do a lot with teaching kids how to, how to make presentations using Google products. And then they're also very, between classroom teachers and those, those two staff members who are really kind of our in-job embedded leaders, they do a lot of coordinating with teachers. And we've seen a huge growth in our teachers in terms of using iMovie, using green screen technology. We have a green screen, we've just got a padcaster to help kids be able to make presentations and, and have kind of that, you know, that, that, what's the right word for it? You, we had a lot of green screen projects before where the kids were looking down at their, their written piece of paper and the padcaster helps them see, it's kind of like a teleprompter almost, help them see their own text right in front of their eyes. So they're really, we, we do have some in-house experts. And then it's also our hope to bring in, to bring in some smart board experts to help teachers learn more about notebook technology and notebook, the, the, the the ability to use notebook better by purchasing multiple smart boards at once. We'll have multiple learners, like, you know, adult learners of the technology at the same time. But I think that one of the things that, there's a little bit of homegrown teacher growth that goes on because we have teachers that are really interested in creating projects that are aligned with their CUPAs and their, and their, and the competencies and allowing students to choose different ways to demonstrate their learning. And so we have teachers who really help kids integrate, like I said before, iMovie and slides and photos and different ways to, to creatively express themselves. And so we, we've seen a lot of that teacher leadership within the building. But Becca, do you have things to add to that?
Everything I had in my head is just shared, except also the, no, that was perfect. And also the professional learning community. So we have our, our teachers self-selected and created their communities this year. And we have, actually, our technology PLC was so large that we ended up breaking it up into grade spans or areas of expertise. So for example, there's one for special education, there's one for the unified arts, there's one for different grade spans. But they are exploring technologies and sharing out with each other as a self-selected opportunity that's embedded every month.
So Brian, that's a great question. And I'll say that this is, this is like 2.0 or 3.0 of the tech plan. And I, I want to say a couple of quick thanks. Brian, first of all, I want to acknowledge your, your question because I think you're spot on that the longest lever to pull on a tech plan is, is teachers. It's not just tossing a device to a student saying, go get them. And we've seen a huge evolution over time. So my thanks are to the administration and the teachers for having, and the, and the SAU for having the foresight and helping us develop a plan. Because when this pandemic hit, I think the North Hampton School was blessed to have as many devices as we did and to have students and teachers that were familiar with using devices in their day-to-day curriculum. The, the, again, maybe a bigger thanks is to the community because the community made this commitment to make sure we had a one-to-one plan a couple of years ago and continued that commitment, including purchasing smart boards in a, in a plan that was developed by the administration even last year or this year during the pandemic. The commitment we have by the families in this community for our students is amazing. So thank you. And it's being used well, so.
And just to add on a personal thank you to Dimitri, who spent hours with me, with my daughter when she was in the RLA. So thank you to Dimitri.
Um, any other comments? I've got one last recommendation, but it's not my call. I think we retire the switch names and maybe call them primary and secondary or something like that going forward.
I would love to.
All right.
That's a technology thing.
All right. All right. Next item, thank you, Dimitri. Trimester three update.
Is there, are we going to do a vote on the?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, I apologize. Just go back to the community. Thank you, Rhonda. So do we have a motion to accept the tech plan?
Make a motion to accept the technology plan as presented.
Second?
A second.
The additional conversation. All right, Rhonda.
Okay, Martin Tavishian?
Yeah.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Ponjes?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
And Danielle Strater?
Yes.
All right, that vote's recorded.
All right, now we can move on to the trimester three update.
Can I just, can I just start this piece for you, Susan? Because I really want to start by commending this team. I want to commend the administrators, the teachers, the EAs. You know, I just want to echo what everybody else has been saying. Food service, technology, facilities. They, they switched plans, they have, and Susan will get more specific on it, but over 100 new students in the building, welcoming so many more students in the building for, for try three. And they had the, you know, five-day-a-week plan a week earlier than they anticipated. And I'm hearing nothing but wonderful, wonderful things about how it's going. So thank you for letting me insert that. Go ahead.
Sure. Actually, it's, it's, it's pretty brief. I think things are going really well. The middle school students have been, you know, it's interesting in particular, one grade in particular, but there were, some of the kids were really quiet. One of the grades was really quiet the first week and the teachers were commenting on, on how quiet they were and, and how, you know, they wondered how long it would take them to kind of come back out of their cells. And it took them five days. So everything was pretty much packed and wonderful on this Monday. So and, and, and you know, some of the other grades didn't even have that, that much of a, of a lag time to feel, to seem to feel pretty comfortable again. So we, we, we have this new schedule and we're, we're slowly ironing out little kinks in it, but it's really working very well. And, you know, we think that this is the schedule that will carry us through to the end of the year. We welcomed back 19 students from the RLA and 97 students in grades six, seven, and eight. So we no longer have two of the three. Well, we have, our, our remote middle school groups have diminished significantly. And we are currently monitoring with 100, about 120 additional students in the building. It has impacted the car line a bit. You know, pack your patience is kind of the motto if you're coming to, to drop off or pick up. Actually, drop off is pretty quick, pickup takes a little bit longer. And we're monitoring the numbers on the buses and trying to make sure that we have an accurate handle on how many students are on each bus. We have lists, but you know, sometimes families sign up for the bus and then don't use it. And then some, we found a few that didn't tell us they wanted to ride the bus and the kids are on it. So we're trying to get accurate numbers to make sure that things are really safe. We do have two buses that have a, a larger number of kids on them. But with siblings sitting together, we can still accommodate one per seat with some vigilance. But we are trying to monitor that more closely. We're taking attendance on the buses morning and afternoon every day this week to make sure that our numbers match up with, with what we thought we had. And then in, in really probably the best news of the trimester three update, we have chosen a, a graduation date for eighth grade and we believe that we can hold an outdoor graduation for our eighth graders on Thursday, June 10th. And we have a rain date of Monday, June 14th. We will be monitoring the state recommendations for gathering size even outdoors. So it's possible that, that there may need to be a limit on the number of guests for each student, but we're not, we feel that those, those parameters could change between now and June. So we're not, we're, 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 we're just about ready to announce the date, save the date, but we'll make the final decisions when the time gets closer in terms of, you know, if there's a limit on guests. But we think we can set it up outdoors. We think we have a good sound system that we can utilize and we're pretty, that's pretty exciting. So that's, that's my, that's, that's the update questions, comments.
Then I just had a question about the logistics with graduation. Will you be live streaming it? Should there be any challenges with folks being in attendance to do that?
So that, I think that would be a goal to be able to do that. We, we haven't gotten that far yet. So that was, we just actually had a conversation at our last principals meeting. I don't know if you want to talk about that, Caroline, because other schools are also, you know, making similar plans. Did, did you want to add anything, Caroline?
Um, yeah, we're coordinating the, we're coordinating graduation dates across all our districts, trying to make sure that they don't fall on the same night as when it kind of in particular. Because, you know, we, you know, we have families who want to go to both. Their K eight, the eighth grade graduation and the senior graduation. And there are a series of events that week. And some of the schools actually use the winter kind of field for their, for their final ceremony. So we're looking at all of that. But as far as technology, certainly that's something that we want to make sure that we have as much access as possible for people who can't be there, particularly if we have to restrict the number of guests even outside. It, it could be the case that we were only allowing, you know, I don't know, two to four guests per, per student. So, yeah, we'll definitely want to be looking at that.
Channel 22 might be a great resource for that. They've been very supportive of the school in the past and that might, might be an, an advocate for us. Great question, Danielle.
Great idea.
So Susan, if, if, if you're prepared to answer, this is totally fine. If you're not, no sweat, we can defer to a later time. But I know that there have been some questions about. But I know that there have been some questions about sports and kind of what might be happening this spring. Do you have any updates on athletics?
Sure, I actually do. I was, that was going to be in my principal's report, but I can, I can keep that down. So we've been working with our athletic director, Patrick Greedy, has been working with other athletic directors across the seacoast to, to just kind of gauge what we have planned with what some of the other schools have planned. And what he's found is that it kind of runs the gamut that very few middle schools are having competitive sports, but they're, you know, they're trying to do different kinds of activities. So we are going to be offering intramural sports. So we're going to be offering baseball, softball, track, cross country, and a cycling club. And the plan is to offer them right after school so that kids don't have to go home and come back. So to offer them from like one forty-five to two forty-five. And we think we have the coaches lined up for that. So each sport would be two days a week so that we don't have too many kids outside at once. All kind of mixing with sports, but these would be offerings for sixth through eighth graders.
Any other questions about trimester three update, comeback comments? So just one quick comment. I know it was a big transition. I know kind of changing plans, getting people back, making sure everyone was good at, at home and, and at school was a, a big deal. So thank you for your leadership. And thank you for all of the teachers for your fortitude.
I mean, the teachers, we're so, we are so fortunate. The teachers are just amazing. And you know, they're, they're, the, the joy, actually, I probably should have mentioned this, they're so happy to see kids. I mean, kids are happy to be back and teachers are so happy to see students in their rooms again. And it's just, you know, it's really felt good. And I think one of the things that's been really noteworthy is, so the middle school staff in particular are very happy. But it's not just them. Like downstairs, you'll see like second grade teachers, first grade teachers, third grade teachers just say, it's so good to see everyone in the building again. So I think it's, you know, we're very blessed with our staff and they're very happy to have kids back too.
Good.
I have a quick, just a real quick question. I know we worried so much about the kids going back to school on how that will look for them due to the stress of weeks and months prior to going back in. I, I mean, you're right. I see nothing but happiness in my sixth grader that he's back, that he sees his teachers, his friends. And even with the limitations and restrictions and things that they need to do. I, I see a different kid already myself here. So I'm just curious, is, are there, are there, have you seen in this small timeframe, any real issues of kids going back? Or is it all just been happy?
Well, I mean, it's an adjustment. So I, I mean, I think it's been overall a very positive adjustment, but it's still an adjustment. I mean, I think there, and I think it's affected different students differently. So it's kind of an individual reaction. Some kids are just so happy to be back. Some kids, you know, like sleeping late and it's, it's hard for them to get up early. Some kids are adjusting to the, just the physical setup and the fact that they're in smaller groups and they don't, you know, they're not spending the whole day with larger groups of kids and they're not moving around as much. I, I think that that adjustment is, it's an adjustment, but they seem to be making that pretty well, I would say. I, I, actually, Becca, why don't you chime in? Because you're upstairs a lot too.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I, I do think it's, it's very mixed and very individual depending on the child. But I will say that the teachers are, are paying attention more to that than to the academics even right now. So they're really focused on group dynamics as well as on individual student needs. So the conversations when we get together on team are very much around kind of what do we, what do they need? Who's struggling? Who's successful? How, how will we manage that rainy day when they need to get outside and move around and, and see their friends? So it's, it was definitely a focus. As we mentioned, coming into the school year, that social emotional learning was going to be a focus for all of us, K to twelve. But certainly that, that's a big focus for, for our teams as they support students in making this really important transition. And also helping them to be ready to socialize and to be academically in classes in high school for our eighth graders. So that's been, they basically have that one trimester with these students to make that, that adjustment that gets them ready in that way. So that's a big focus for them as well.
Good.
Any other questions? All right, well, let's move on to the superintendent search. And Dr. Hobbs, if I can ask you to give us a update on where we stand?
Sure, happy to speak to it. There has been some movement since the joint board. So as you all know, closing dates this April fourth, so basically end the week this week. We know this is a competitive process and we know that other districts are advertising. So we've started kind of a parallel process of, of first round of interviews already. So we've already had an interview. We have an interview scheduled for next week. So that's going to be happening in a par- parallel nature to actually collecting application materials. I think the next steps are really just going to be determined by what applications we have coming in as we reach the deadline. And furthermore, how our first round of interviews go. But we're planning on moving forward as quickly and efficiently as possible. That's where we are. We have, we have three members of the committee on this meeting. So if you have any, anything to add?
We had a lot of interest. Are there a lot of applicants at least?
There, there are a number of applicants. I, I think.
Start?
Yeah, I think. Well, we'll, we'll see. I, I, it's hard to tell before it closes. And I hate to make any preliminary judgments before this thing wraps up in terms of the advertisement.
Thank you, Dr. Hobbs. So the committee is, you didn't really ask this question, but I'll, I'll say the committee is committed to making sure that the candidate that's presented to the joint board is extremely qualified. And we've got a, a, a solid pool. And, and I'm sure we'll be able to do, we'll serve our students and the, the school as well in the process. Now, any comments? You just waiting for your finance report? Any questions for Dr. Hobbs? Good. So moving on to the written reports. Dr. Akalian, superintendent's report, make comments.
Thank you. Yes, my pleasure. And before I highlight some pieces of my report, I wanted to, you know, just getting back to how it's going in the building, I had the pleasure of visiting for the first time in a very long time, a couple of weeks ago. And I, I can, I can definitely say that people are very smiley, very happy. The kids are, the kids are laughing. You hear laughter in the hallways. One of the unsung heroes is our librarians these days, especially at Northampton, delivering books. I mean, you have to put it in a wagon, get it in the elevator, bring it up to this floor, leave a wagon here, go up to the next floor, leave a wagon here, pick up books. It's, their job has changed incredibly in all our schools. So it was just something that was consistent across all the schools that I visited. I'm always seeing the librarians in the hallways delivering the books. So they're dedicated to get books in kids' hands. Okay, so I attached my report. I'll just highlight a couple of things on here. So yes, we had an incredibly successful vaccination weekend. I never thought I'd have that in an education report, but here it is. It was great and it definitely increased, improved morale for, for so many, for so many colleagues across our districts. That was March twentieth, twenty-first, and the second dose is scheduled for April seventeenth. That, that will be Saturday morning. I think the bulk of our educators will be vaccinated. Those who come to the pod, the second dose weekend between nine and noon that Saturday. We are receiving the Moderna vaccine. So for those who do require a little extra time to recover from the second dose, they'll be between forty-two to forty-six hours between, between the, the second dose and the start of school Monday morning. So we feel pretty confident with that. I want to make sure I thank the Hampton Fire Department. They've been instrumental in arranging the entire operation. And we also have EMTs from Northampton and from Hampton Falls who are there as well administering the vaccine to our, to our educators. So we could definitely not have done it without them. Thank you very much for doing that. It's definitely improvement for, for our teachers and staff. Susan talked about spring sports, starting in all our districts. Everyone's very excited to offer opportunities for kids to be outside after school, middle school and high school. Starting in April or May. So that's very exciting. And then I just wanted to highlight their, their, of course, a lot of return to in-person learning across all our districts. We have five days a week for every student, every student across every grade level in SAU twenty-one has access to five days per week of in-person learning. It's very exciting. All of that is well underway. We're still, you know, we still have students who are in full remote instruction at this time. So we'll continue to offer that. And we also have the hybrid as a third option offered at Winnebago High School. I've heard a lot of different comments and reflections from, from staff and from parents and from some high school students who had some listening sessions for, for all of the above and had some really insightful comments from that, from them as far as challenges that they've had to, they've had to endure. And then also some, some interesting positive outcomes from, from this whole experience. So I'll continue to be, to be reaching out and spending time with, with our different groups and, and sharing some of those comments with our boards. Lastly, that's not on this report, but I wanted to make sure I mentioned, I wanted to thank this board. You, you showed us incredible support after the joint board equity presentation. So I want to make sure that I publicly thank all of you for that. It's, it's very, very important to all of us. And, you know, there's some things that are coming down in the legislature that are, that, that could be threats to some of our, some of our initiatives and policies and curriculum. And I know that Becca is going to touch on this a little bit later, but you have a very strong administration and, and staff who really care about equity too. And the fact that the board is, is supporting that as well means a lot. So I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that. So thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Akalian. I apologize for the background noise. I've got a problem with my other computer.
Thank you.
That's better. Thank you for your update. Dr. Hobbs, if we can move on to the assistant superintendent, superintendent report?
Yep. So you have the written report attached to board docs. There are three topics on there. Actually, I'll add another one to preface this. We, and it's very new. We just finished our vertical team meetings this week, Monday and Tuesday. And for those of you guys who don't know, that's the opportunity for representatives really around grades eight and nine in subject matters to teachers to get together and look at transitions. And, you know, especially this year, this becomes a really important conversation about recommendations, about any gaps in curriculum and about any scheduling issues that need to be presented to the high school. So those meetings took place earlier this week. We look forward to more, more meetings around curriculum, instruction, assessment. But this one was really about the transition from eighth to ninth grade. So that was good. To the report, we have a summer planning update. It's important to know that the CARES SER two point O came in. And this is, this is less relevant to Northampton because the, the funding was a little lower than the other districts. But it is important because we are trying to tie together some of the professional development offerings as a result of that funding and put together a comprehensive picture across the SAU to use that, those funds well. So more, more coming on that. Certification update. We are in the harassment stage of teacher certification. We have about fifteen days left till the due date, April fifteenth, to get all our, all of our teachers submitted to the DOE. So we're working hard on that. We're looking, we're tracking well. We've got a hundred and ten endorsements approved out of a total of a hundred and seventy-two. So it's just, we're in the final stretch there. And last, world language update. Wanted to, this came up at the last board meeting. I think it's important. So I wanted to make sure you guys knew that it wasn't off of our plates. Actually, taking the recommendation from Greg Duffy, we started rather than looking at performance data and recommendations for next year, which are, it's muddy because of COVID, obviously. We started looking at some best practices associated with world language instruction. I had a really good conversation with Oyster River's assistant superintendent. They went through this a couple of years ago. So I'm stealing liberally from some of the homework they did around world language instruction. And we also took some time out of the vertical team meeting at that world language meeting to talk through what we see as some of the essential debates and some of the essential questions coming into world language programming across the SAU. So the intent would be to develop some, I'll call them recommendations or best practices around instructions. And it's, of course, it's going to be district by district choice in terms of scheduling and in terms of comprehensiveness of program. But we want to make sure that we are able to point, point our schools in the right direction and support our students and teachers as best as possible. So that's moving forward. I'm looking forward to it.
Thanks, Dr. Hobbs. Thank you for collaborating with Oyster River.
They were great.
Any other comments or questions? I appreciate your follow-up on, on world language. That's, that's great news. All right, the moment you've all been waiting for? The finance report. Oh, no, we have to vote on this discussion.
Principal's report.
Principal, oh my gosh, the moment you've all been waiting for, the principal's report.
I was sitting here thinking like, really?
Super duper sorry. I, I scrolled down on my screen. I'm so sorry about that, Susan. That was intentional.
I've actually, I've actually spoken to, to much of what's in the written report. The couple of things I would just mention are that the tents got delivered early. So we have two large tents. And we have a signup system for the tents with Google calendars. And we also are going to be setting up two separate places for music outside so that the tents can be accessible to all the classrooms. Second grade is working on their, the, the digital virtual version of their invention convention. So the green screen's been up and it's, it's a project that they've done typically and then invited parents in. And they, they do a version of like an infomercial that pairs persuasive writing with an invention that they create. So it's really kind of a creative second grade tradition that's, that's come into play. That's still happening and it'll just end up being all digital. And then I just would, if you, if you're interested in the breakdown of of students, numbers of students who are still remote versus students who are in, in person in the building, there's a table in the written report that breaks that down for you. So that's, it's not, I think, like I said, I think we've talked about a lot of the things that were in the written report, but I did want to kind of pass the baton over to Becca because we have had some discussions this week about House Bill number five forty-four. And Becca can, can give you an update about that. And I think that's, that's what Caroline was alluding to at the very beginning. So Becca, would you like to talk about HB five four four?
Sure. And so this is something that's been on the radar of educators and community members across the state for a little while now. It, it speaks to, it's, it's a bill with, with support that was created by four house members and it definitely, were, were it to pass, it would make it very difficult to continue in our equity work and, and the work that we're all so passionate about right now. I definitely encourage folks to, to read it if you haven't. It defines certain concepts as divisive is, is kind of the, the theme of, of the bill and prohibits contractors that work for the state to, to engage or endorse those, those divisive concepts. I think one thing that some folks miss when they, when they read the bill is the I think one thing that some folks miss when they, when they read the bill is the word contractors might not be really clear. Anyone, any of us who work under contract for the state, so that includes educators, it includes college professors. It it impacts education significantly. So in speaking with Representative Jim Magior, I hope I'm not got his name right. Good. I chatted with him earlier this week, just kind of hoping that he could give me an update on how things were looking. And he let me know, which I was not aware, that it's currently attached to the budget. So House Bill 544 right now is attached to the budget, which is really concerning. And so I asked him, what can we do? And and he was very glad to hear from us. He was glad to hear that people in the community were aware and in education were were wanting to help promote, amplify the message, he said. And so he suggested using social media and letters to the editor. And so I reached out to Caroline, Dave and Susan, and I asked if if it would be okay if I did a letter, wrote a letter to the editor as the curriculum coordinator of Northampton School to represent our our position on this. And they gave me their full support. Anything you need was pretty much what what they said. And so I apologize that I couldn't get it to the board ahead of time. I actually just wrote it yesterday and submitted it yesterday. It's going to the floor, the the House to to vote on April 7th. So time was definitely of the essence. And I shall note that Governor Sununu is hopeful that that the Senate is helpful in some of some of these. There are multiple bills that are attached to to the the budget and that different people have different feelings on. But certainly, I think there'll be more movement within the Senate as well. But our first, our first big event is is next week on the on the House floor. So I'll just read quickly the letter that I wrote. It's brief. They only let you have 250 words, so I had to be really brief. Even in times of divisiveness, there are things on which the residents of New Hampshire will always agree, namely the value of education in our children. I've been honored to serve our students as an educator and educational leader. I'm writing to you because of my significant concerns regarding HB 544 currently attached to the state budget. As educators, we support all children in reaching their fullest potential by creating school cultures that promote acceptance and inclusion. Each student should feel supported and challenged. To this end, we're working to achieve equity by asking ourselves questions about how we might more effectively interact with and facilitate the growth of students from diverse backgrounds. HB 544 would cease much of this equity work, making it unlawful, for example, for us to conduct workshops, helping our teachers to examine unconscious biases about race or gender. For our students, robust learning opportunities currently exist in classroom discussions of relevant topics such as the NCAA tournament for men and women's basketball and the Derek Chauvin trial. Our students debate these complex issues connecting to our country's history as appropriate. The practical implication of this bill makes it unlawful for teachers to engage their students in consideration of the systemic aspects of these topics. The budget will be coming to the House for House for a vote when it meets April 7th tonight. I encourage all community members to ask the HB 55544 be removed from it. So I don't know that it will be published. I'm hopeful that that it will. I'm hopeful that there are other educators and and community members that are speaking out against this as well.
Thank you, Becca.
Ryan?
I just want to say thank you, first of all, for the presentation that you did at the joint board meeting. And second of all, that we're taking an active stance for our community. And Becca, that you took the the opportunity to share that, you know, we feel different about these types of topics and that we want our students. I have a kindergartner and I want her to talk about this. And I wanted to be part of every thread of her experience in Northampton. So thank you for writing that.
Any other comments? Yeah, Becca, thank you for writing that. So and this is just my opinion. I I find it ironic that, you know, we, we want to make sure that we, you know, we're free. We want to make sure that every voice is heard, but then we say, but only if you agree with me, right? Not, I'm not saying that you're saying that back. I'm saying that's kind of what what this, what this proposal is doing. And the irony does not escape me. So thank you for standing up and sharing your voice.
And I just want to say, I so appreciate Becca's her voice and and her helping us all stay informed about some of these issues. So Dave had brought this topic to us at one point, too. And Becca's done a lot of following. And I mean, I didn't, I didn't realize that they, in an attempt to pass it easily, they were connecting it to the budget. So, you know, just staying on top of things like that is really important. And we're very fortunate to work with folks who are really paying close attention to 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 things like this that could jeopardize our ability to to provide the kind of education that we really value. So thank you, Becca, and thank you, Dave.
Yeah, all voices need to be heard. Okay, the other moment you've been waiting for. Matt?
Somewhat anticlimactic, but thank you. So we have included the fiscal year to date expenditure and revenue reports in board docs. There have not been a significant changes to the reports, but I do want to briefly summarize some of the major variances so that for the benefit of our new school board members, and just a general reminder of where we currently stand. So the the expenditure report and our budget as a whole is in pretty solid position in as as we are looking to complete this last quarter of the fiscal year. We do still have three months of school remaining with associated costs that aren't encumbered. And then, you know, that there is always the possibility of unanticipated expenditures or costs. But as we do get closer to the to the to the year end, I do intend to bring forth an estimate as to where we anticipate ending the fiscal year. So probably at that, that may, at the next board meeting, may, I'll have a, we'll have a pretty decent estimate of of year end balances. As of today, our total operating budget has has a balance of approximately $150,000 of available funds. We are recognizing savings in in some salary accounts for positions that have not been filled. But we are over budget in our our substitute accounts. This is primarily due to some long term substitutes and for our remote learning academy positions that we have to add. Overall, our regular education department or function does have a balance of just under $100,000, but will likely be closer to the $40,000 range by year end. This is due to the fact that long term substitute salaries, they're not encumbered. For the for the entire year, they they're they're reflected in the in the expenditure report as we expend those funds. Additionally, our special education department is over budget by about just over $100,000. And this is primarily due to professional services. So this would be for, you know, services such as that we contract out. So, you know, if we contracted out of, you know, OT, PT, those type of psychologists, those type of services. B C B A, our student activities department is under budget by $50,000. And this is primarily due to our decrease in extracurricular activities. We're, we're also over budget in facilities by about $80,000. This is due to increases in our cleaning costs, PPE. We've had some substantial rental fees for for tents and and other COVID related expenses. And then we're, we're also you know, about $100,000 under budget in our benefits accounts. And again, this is this correlates to our savings in our salaries. So for those positions that weren't filled or changes turnover with lower salaries. In addition to the savings on the expenditure side, we do have some unanticipated revenue surplus this year. This includes donations, some insurance rebates that we've recognized again, and that's due to COVID. So that'd be like health insurance, property and liability. We received some REAP grant funding and then we had our we did have some surplus in special education aid revenue as well as the supplemental public school response fund, which so those those revenue sources were are approximately $150,000 more than what we had anticipated. So finally, this the state has allocated funds from the second stimulus package. That's the CARES SIR Act to to all school districts in the state, and Northampton is receiving $25,000 from the second package. Further, we are, we have been told that the third stimulus package will include, you know, approximately two times that amount for for schools. So that's going to be likely an addition of about $50,000 in that third stimulus package. Once we do receive those exact allocations and then develop a plan on how to utilize those funds, we will bring that back to the school board to report back on that utility of of funds. That will, depending on when we receive that information, that'll likely be the May, May or June school board meeting. So that that summarizes the finance report, but I am happy to answer any questions on any specific items on either the revenue or expenditure side. I know the anticipation was was hard. I, all my, all that information was more than than you expected, so.
Not at all. We've got, we've got additional revenue, right? And some savings and some roadworks. It's all good. So thanks for your work, Matt. If there's no additional questions, we will move on. Forgive me as I navigate here. So there's no new business. With that, we're going to go to personnel nominations, which will require us to go into a non-public. But before we do that, just in case folks at home don't want to hang out and wait for us to come into non-public, I'll share some future meeting dates. So we have a joint board policy committee meeting on Wednesday, April 14th at 4:30. SAU 21 Operations Committee meeting on Tuesday, May 4th at 5:30. Northampton School Board Meeting next will be Thursday, May 6th at 6:30. And then the SAU Joint Board, May 25 at 6:00 PM. You'll be able to find all of the documents in preparation for me on board docs for board members. And thank you for the new committee meeting members. Now, I would like to ask for a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A32A through E.
I think a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A3?
I apologize, A32B. I apologize. Did I see that? I was looking at the wrong thing again. Rhonda's my coach today. So I'm going to make a correction. A motion to enter non-public under RSA 91A32B.
I will second.
Thanks. All right, we're going to go into non-public. Oh, roll call ball.
Yeah, I have to turn my mic on. Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater? Okay, we are going into non-public at 8:15. And if you just give me a few moments, we've got five people as attendees to this meeting. So what we're going to do is we're going to bring them in as panelists and then we're going to immediately put them on hold. So that will prevent, well, they're dropping right now. So that might be even quicker. So I'm going to bring them in. And as soon as we bring them in, we're going to, like I said, we're going to put them on hold.
So Rhonda, I think you have to give Dimitri the option to do that, too, because he
Yes, we're going to put Dimitri on hold if that's okay, Dimitri.
Start the recording. Oh, yeah, there you go.
There you go. There you go. Motion to go into non-public?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the non-public session and resume the public meeting.
Welcome back, everybody. We've got two nominations.
We're going to take a vote real quick on that, Tom?
Yeah, right. I'll get, I'll get used to this.
You'll get there. Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
All right, you are back in public session at 8:31.
Now, do we have a motion for the nominations?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept. Do we have to do it individually or can we do both?
We have them individually. It's better to have each one as their own.
I'll make a motion to accept. SS.
There's a little tab, Brian, as a as a user in board docs, you should be able to click the motion.
Sarah Stone. I'll make a motion to accept Sarah Stone for case management position.
Technically, you're supposed to vote on the superintendent's nomination.
Yeah, a motion to approve the interim superintendent's nomination of Sarah Stone for the position of Special Education Case Manager for 2122 school year.
Yeah.
So moved.
Just what he said, right?
Yes.
Give a second.
Okay, we ready for a vote? Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
And Danielle Strater?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Excellent. Thank you, Rhonda. And do we have a motion to approve the interim superintendent's nomination of Lauren Chase for the position of Special Education Case Manager for 2122 school year?
I guess I will make a motion to approve the superintendent's interim superintendent's nomination for Laura Chase for the position of Special Education Case Manager for 2122 school year.
Excellent. Second. Anybody?
Second.
What was in there?
Are we ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Brian Belanger?
Yes.
Danielle Strater?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded as well.
All right, right before the motion to adjourn, Rhonda, thank you. I want to thank everybody. Welcome, Brian. Welcome, Danielle. The content was really good. The process was choppy, but we'll get better. So thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, usually when we get to this point, if everybody just waves their hand, I market unanimous.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Congratulations, Sarah.